Thank you, and I'm gonna start a little unorthodox. The board had asked me to prepare about a 40-page PowerPoint to tell you about myself, and after sitting for the past two or three hours, I sort of have what we call in the association world, "meeting butt," you know, where you sit for so long that you start to get a little bit antsy. So, the good thing is, is I hate speeches. I'm a natural introvert, and speeches are for extroverts, and I'm a professional extrovert, but I'm a natural introvert. And so, instead, we put chairs up here, and want to have a dialogue, and really make this more a conversation. And I'm hoping that'll help your meeting butt, and I'm also hoping that that will create a very open dialogue. And I think, starting out, I want to do a little bit of introduction of myself, but I think I want to ask you, and start that dialogue, and say, "Why does CMAA exist?" Anybody? What are the competencies of CMAA? Why are we here?
Education.
Education, professional development, core.
Networking.
Networking, community, absolutely. Anything else?
Camaraderie, professionalism.
Professionalism, camaraderie, so ethics.
Business acumen.
Business acumen. All of the advocacy is probably one. We have a big water rights bill that we want you all to support right now.
Leadership.
Leadership, good stuff. Today, and the reason I'm starting a little bit differently is, we had a futurist come in, and that futurist talked, and I was chomping at the bit, because I would have liked to have rearranged some of that conversation, but there's, just as your clubs are going through an evolution, associations are going through an evolution too. And there's two other things that associations now are doing that most of, nobody said, and that is scanning, and that is where, you are the caretakers of the profession. CMAA is the caretaker of the profession. And so, we need to be looking at where the future is, where the future of clubs are, where the future from a skill set and profession is, and make sure that we are providing you those competencies and those tools to be able to meet that future challenge. That is key for an association, and much more key now than it was 25 years ago. In addition, the world has changed, and associations now have to work in an environment where we co-create. We are not a service provider, and we provide services to you as an association, but instead, we co-create. We create together, and that means the national organization, the chapters, you as members, you as partners, it's all about that community, and leveraging that community to co-create those solutions. So, that's another skill set that associations need and have to have. So, associations have evolved. So, as we went through the search, I thought that those competencies I would start out with, and talk about, put that, you know, as our base, and then talk about what I bring to all of you to help fulfill that. And I'm gonna leverage the term CEO, and use it in a couple different ways to help talk about what I bring to the table, and then we'll get into some questions, and Damon looks scared to death there of what I'm gonna say, so, which is good. I've been throwing him curveballs ever since they hired me. So, CEO, clearly when we think of CEO, we think of Chief Executive Officer. And as your CEO, you know, I guess from a background standpoint, educational background, I bring to you, and I'm very humbled to be here, and certainly very excited to be here, and so, all this skill set that I bring is to continue to leverage the association. And I know all of you are the ones that bleed the CMAA blood, and that was one of the reasons I'm here, is that I'm leaving an association that was very, very passionate, and I wanted to come to that same environment. So, I love passion, and you'll see and hear, hopefully, that from me as well. So, the skill set that I bring, let's start with CEO, and let's start with educational background. My BS is in business administration. I needed to focus that somewhere, so I focused on finance with a technology minor. I'm 54-years-old, and coming out, and so, if you're quick at math, I went to school in the late '70s, early '80s, and realized at that point that computers were punch cards, and I'm dating myself, you know, and the world was changing. But technology was going to be a key in business going forward, so I wanted to have that skill set, and I've leveraged that all through my career. Once I got into the association world and realized this was my career, I went back and I got my master's degree in running nonprofit organizations. So, it is a profession. There are thousands of us. My association has about 25,000 members, so association professionals are real, you can get degrees in that. From a professional experience level, it's interesting, I came into the profession, I, like many of you, you sort of wander as you get out of college, and figure out what you want to do, and suddenly you land somewhere, and that becomes your profession. So, I wandered a little bit, and just about the time Jim became your CEO, I stepped into the association world. And I have felt, going through this process, that my background in those 25 years that I have been spending was really your succession plan, and that I have been gaining the experience to be able to come here today and be your CEO. And let me explain that a little bit. I started my association career at professional insurance agents, which are independent insurance agents. My guess is, most of them are your members, so I started to understand those folks. I also learned a lot about risk management, learned a lot about directors and officers' liability, learned a lot about P&amp;C, various coverages, and learned a lot about the association. That's where I cut my teeth, from the association standpoint. I came into that organization as the head of information systems technology. I was one of the first people in the association community that came into an association really as an IT person. At the time, the organization had about 150 staff, and ran two $30-million insurance book of business, and so, technology was pretty important to what they ran as an organization. However, the core of that association was chapters, in the same setup as here, where they're all, we had a common membership, but chapters were all affiliated. Left that organization nine years later, going through, became the CFO, kept adding responsibilities, human resources, and membership, and professional development, and certification, and on and on and on, and left there as the number two of the organization. At that time, I had the fever, and the fever was that I wanted to become an association CEO, but I needed to round out my experience. So, what I did was jumped out of the professional association environment, and went to a trade association, representing the derivatives industry, and understand, as a professional association person, you don't know, and I'll get into it as we go through this, you don't know the subject matter. So, you have to learn the subject matter and practice your craft while making sure you can gather that information. So, I left insurance, went to derivatives. Yeah, that's pork bellies, and weather futures, and all that kind of stuff. Iron butterfly strategies, if any of you want to talk about, you know, trading strategies, I'm happy to have a conversation with you. Very technical environment. My members were Goldman Sachs, Merrill Lynch, Bank of America, they spent, their dues were half a million dollars, maybe, to the association. A little bit different than the professional insurance agents, where the dues were, in the '80s, you know, a hundred and some dollars. But it gave me the experience of working and understanding advocacy, and understanding how important that was. It also gave me the, again, working with probably some of your members, if they work on Wall Street, or are connected with that community, you know, I understand that community, and I've worked with those folks. I also worked for a CEO that was there for 25 years, almost 30 years, and so, started to understand that mindset of how, that's a special environment when you work with a CEO that's been there that long. I, as I came in, I came in as Chief Operating Officer, so I was the number two. I was there to run the association, he was there to be the advocacy front. Picked up the foundation work, so that I became the head of the foundation, and, again, a competency that's important for CMAA, that foundation side, really developed the ability to work with lots of different folks, lots of different partners, and left there and went to NERE, the National Investor Relations Institute. What are those folks? They're corporate communicators. Scared me to death, because I was like, here I am, and among an audience of folks that are communicators, and who am I to get up and tell them how to communicate, and you have to make a speech like this? They adopted me, and helped me to get through, and be able to get up here and give a speech, because, again, I'm a natural introvert. But, you know, what we did, coming into that organization, was the CEO retired after 25 years. For many association professionals, that is the kiss of death. It's like dating, you know, when you have a longtime girlfriend or boyfriend, and you leave that person, you never want to be the next person in the chute, because chances are that relationship isn't gonna happen. They stay very long. But I thrive on that. I love that, because to me, it's a special, it takes a special skill set to appreciate the past while changing it for the future. I came into there in 2000, in late 2007, early 2008. What I didn't realize was, we were all walking into a recession, the Great Recession. And I immediately was faced with budget shortfalls, all sorts of challenges, as well as a profession that was under attack. Companies were under attack. Companies created this recession. Companies are still the bad guys out there. CEOs still make too much money, I'm sure, in most of your opinion. And I was representing the professional association that communicated that. My members, my board members, would consist of Microsoft, and Procter &amp; Gamble, and Mastercard, the name brands that you know, and so, these folks are out on the line of communicating. And we came through that, and where I am today, as I leave, is the association is very strong financially, but it has been reoriented to be very member-driven. It's not my association, it is your association, and I'm here to be a facilitator, to make those things happen that we are going to co-create. And so, they are very healthy now. They were unhappy to see me leave, but it's interesting that, going through the process, I was always the ear for many of them, as they were, as they looked for different professional challenges, so, when I said, you know, I'm in my mid-50s, if I'm ever gonna make a jump, now's the time, they couldn't argue with me, because I had counseled all of them as they went through their own change. So, I'm done with that, and I'm hoping to be here for 15 years, if you will have me. But, you know, I bring with that lots of skills to understand and run an association. If you want to talk awards and other things, I'm a certified association executive. I have been for about 20 years. I am a fellow of my association, and fellows are people that are theoretically the best and the brightest. Some of us slip in, you know, when we don't necessarily meet that criteria, but there's about 150 of us. So, we are theoretically the thought leaders of the association profession. I have been named the past five years as one of the 100 most influential people in corporate governance, so that's dealing with boards at a corporate level. A couple of years ago, I was named by CEO Update as one of their top 13 association execs within the association community. So, I hope I bring good credibility to all of you, and I don't want to impress you, but I want you to understand that I have a pretty deep, deep well of experience. When I decided to be an association executive, I felt that I needed to sit in your shoes. So, volunteering is something that I have felt has been extremely important. And I spent, I've been in three different communities. I've been on the board of three different community associations, dealt with pools and other facilities, dealt with reserve analysis, dealt with all sorts of things that you deal with in the club environment. I've been the president, and now I'm currently past president of my college alumni association, lots of chapters, and lots of things there. I've been on the board briefly of ASA, I've been on the Canadian Investor Relations Institute board, I've been an elder of two churches, helped run the capital, well, not helped, led the capital campaign to add-on to the church, been a trustee of a 401K trust, and probably most important, I've been a licensed soccer referee. So, you'll see me carrying my yellow and red card, and if things get out of line, I won't hesitate to use them. Some guiding principles from a leadership standpoint, and I shared this with staff, and the board has heard this, and you all are gonna hear this, probably at nauseam, until you can repeat it back to me. One is transparency. It, again, is not my association, but it is your association. And every decision that I make, and every decision that the staff makes, as I have told them, and every decision that the board makes, I want them to assume that all of you, as the members, are sitting on their shoulder, watching what that decision is, and that you may not agree with that decision, but that decision can be justified to all of you, all of you can understand the logic for that decision, and then we move forward. So, that transparency, I'm gonna do everything I can to be as transparent about, as we go through the next chapter, or chapters, of CMAA, to help you understand how we're looking at things, how the board is looking at things, how we're evolving as an organization. I'm also gonna do everything I can to solicit your input, and I'll get back into that in a second. I'm a change agent, but who of us isn't? The world around us is changing at breakneck speed. We all have to be change agents. Many of you are change agents in your clubs. I was at the Metropolitan Club last night for a dinner, and I heard lots of different things about how the Metropolitan Club is evolving. That doesn't mean you don't respect the culture and respect the traditions, but it means that we're in a membership organization, whether it's clubs or CMAA. We are in a customer service business. We continually have to make sure we are meeting the needs of our members. So, change is constant, and you will see what my desire is, is to build a culture of accepting and talking about change as part of our culture within CMAA. That doesn't mean change has to be scary, and it doesn't mean we always have to change to keep progressing forward, but it means that change should be part of our DNA. And if that's part of CMAA, I'm hoping that that becomes part of your DNA as club managers. I'm a believer in continuous learning. I am always learning, and part of the reason I love to come into new organizations is it forces me to learn. I can't wait to learn about club management. I can't wait to go to the BMI programs. I can't wait, I'm a sponge as I talk to folks. That doesn't mean I can do your job, but then again, I wouldn't expect you could do my job of running an association. I also, probably my last principle is diversity. I believe in diversity. I believe that diversity is in diversity of views, that diversity is in diversity of experience, that diversity crosses everything, and the more we get those diverse opinions together and are talking about things, the better off we are gonna be as an organization. But what it takes is to make sure you have somebody that can orchestrate that, and bring that together in a constructive way. We're not all just out there as islands pushing our opinion. So, that's the CEO as the Chief Executive. I also believe I'm the Chief Engagement Officer. And that, to me, means, number one, chapters are key to me. I want to be out there among the members as much as possible, listening to what you are talking about, listening to your issues, and the chapters are key for me to be able to do that. The chapters are also key, because this is a co-extensive organization. We're both in this together. We have to co-create, we have to be here for one mission going forward. My goal will be, as much as possible, to get out, and right now, in the organization I'm in, I probably travel to chapters two days a week, and, you know, we'll see how that comes out. But it's, that's absolutely vital to me. Understand that how I manage is sort of top-down and bottom-up. And in my last organization, I found that I intimidated all my staff very quickly, because I knew all their jobs. I've told my staff at CMAA that already, so I'm hoping that that lessens the intimidation, although I'm looking in the back, and they're all looking at me scared to death. But because I understand their jobs, it helps me to understand how we need to structure and deal with an organization. It's no different than you and your, in your clubs. You want to know all the operations and the pieces. It's part of why you come to CMAA, that's part of why you get your certification. I also manage from the top-down, meaning I need to be out there, listening to members as much as possible, understanding what you want, so that I can be the funnel to make that happen. There's also other ways, data gathering, and surveys, and things that are very important to me. Next, I'm the Chief Encouragement Officer. Internally, it's my job to get the right people on the bus. If you're a Jim Collins person, you know that that's one of his big terms, because it's my, you know, the buck stops on my desk to make sure that the right folks are there, and that we're positioned properly, and that I give them the support they need to do their job. Externally, I'm your cheerleader. I'm the face of CMAA, or will be the face of CMAA, because I don't start until October, so this is sort of a bonus that I'm here. Bonus for me too. But, you know, I'm here to help grow the influence of club management, not only in the US, but worldwide, as CMAA has already started down that path. And part of that is ensuring your skills as club managers, club management professionals are at your peak. And last, I'm the Chief Execution Officer. So, I'm here to develop, and execute, and work with you to set that strategic vision of where we are going together forward, and move that forward. In my current organization, we have a three-year strategic plan that ultimately rolls in every year to an operational plan, that we continually update, not only the board, but the membership, on where we are and where we're progressing. That dovetails into our chapters. You know, there's a lot of things that, as I look at CMAA, you know, I feel like a kid in a candy store, because you have so much potential as an organization, and I just can't wait to get in here, but I'm also scattered, because everywhere I look, I feel that I can touch something and make some, some changes and improve upon things. So, part of my challenge right now is figuring out what that path forward is, and making sure that I understand before I start jumping in. So, those first few months are gonna be a lot of understanding. But that's a little bit about me, and I know Damon is chomping at the bit there to ask questions, and we're gonna bring Tony up, and we're gonna open up the dialogue, and then, hopefully, open it up to all of you.
All right, so fireside chat with no fire. I wanted to just say one thing before we ask our first question. Please know, as Jeff alluded to, he starts mid-October. So, I am so glad that so many of you have reached out to Jeff, and wanted to get to meet our new CEO. Chapters have invited him, but please know, he has spent a lot of time over the last month, having lunch with the staff, spending a lot of time on issues, but technically, it's until mid-October that he joins CMAA full-time, so thank you for keeping that in mind.
But keep those emails coming, not calls. I'm not ready to deal with calls, as in my current employer, but emails I can deal with.
All right, so we're gonna kick off a couple of questions that Tony, and myself, and Jeff, and the board here all the time, and then we'll open it up to the floor. I think the question that I hear the most, Jeff, is, you know, does a lack of club experience, is that a challenge for you? You're not coming from a club industry side, why don't you elaborate on that?
Is it a challenge?
Yes.
Sure, but it's not a challenge that's not easily overcome. I mean, I think that, you know, again, what I bring are the competencies to run an association, and what I need to do is layer on that club understanding very quickly, and that's why I will be as engaged as possible, and gather that education as quickly as possible. You know, to be your CEO doesn't mean I need to be out there running a club. It needs to mean I need to understand your issues. And when I look at sort of the competencies of club management, you know, a lot of them I bring to the table, in a different way. Governance, we just talked about that. Finance, I understand that. Accounting, not a problem. HR, yep, deal with that. Leadership, absolutely. You know, membership and marketing, it's what we do as an association professional. You know, golf sports, recreation management, okay, you got me on that one, you know, but we'll get there. You know, I've certainly been involved, from a sporting standpoint, in various other sports. You know, do I, from an F&amp;B standpoint, you know, do I do F&amp;B like you do? No. You know, I do it at events and things like this, and I've always been very involved as a CEO, so very different. Facilities management, yeah, I mean, I've done that, both as a volunteer, you know, I mentioned pools and other things, but also from a building standpoint. And interpersonal skills, hopefully, I have that too. So, you know, I, I think there is a challenge, but that's what we do as association professionals. That's how we are trained, to make sure that we are able to overcome that, and that's why, you know, there's a heck of a lot of us as association professionals. But I think this question of, do you hire somebody from a club, or do you hire an association professional, is the question that professional associations go through when you're replacing a CEO. It's the right question to ask. And, you know, I guess if I were Flip, I would say, well gee, would you pull somebody off a golf course and make them the head of your club? Probably not. They probably don't have that competency right off the bat, so, and maybe that...
We could talk about that for three or four hours.
So, I hit a, I hit a hot button there, huh? So, it's the right question to ask, but I think the board has been very diligent in going through and saying, what is the skill set we need, and then ultimately landing that you want an association person, and that, hopefully, I've shown you, and hopefully I've told you, how I'm gonna overcome that lack of club experience to be able to run your organization, because what I'm running is professional development and all the various things.
So, is a club like an association in your mind?
There's a lot of similarities, and I understand, you know, 25 years ago, life was a lot simpler, and, you know, hiring me as an association executive versus Jim out of the club side, you know, associations were a much simpler organism. You know, now, associations, you are looking, you know, the world has created an environment with Apple, and with everything around us, our expectations on everything we touch, whether, and you're seeing this in your clubs, whether it's food or recreation, you're expecting everything at a much higher level, and you're expecting your association at a much higher level too. So, you know, again, I'm not worried about it, and I think six months from now, if you still have that issue, let's come back and talk about it, because I don't think it's gonna be an issue that you're gonna be concerned about.
Jeff, I know you know that seated in this room today is the, really, the leadership of our association, and I think it would be helpful to all of us if you give everybody an idea of what your initial focus may be at CMAA.
Sure. I think anybody new coming into an organization, it's just as, it's a time to step back, just as the board has stepped back, and in the search process, they've gone through and tried to develop a business plan, and gone through and done some evaluation. So, as a new CEO coming in, I'm gonna step back and do my own evaluation. And that evaluation starts with looking at our operations, looking at how we do things, and when I say operations, that means our professional development, and our communications, and our membership, and all of that that's housed on King Street. But I'm also gonna look at, you know, what are we doing to serve the membership, and are there some big holes there? I think there are. And, you know, and ultimately, I want to hear that from the members. But my, my objective is to serve the members. So, I need to be able to do that, I need a solid foundation, I need, so I need to evaluate that foundation, and then leverage off of that to make sure I'm servicing you. So, initially, I'm in this period of learning, from, on the club side, as well as evaluating the organization, and then starting to make changes. When I came into NERE, it was pretty immediate, went through that recession, and, you know, it was like a wall that hit you, and I had to make some immediate changes. You know, that speed will be, you know, sort of a conversation, you might say, between the board and I as we go through this.
Thank you. You mentioned the business plan in your answer, and I think it would also be helpful if you'd share with us how you may attack the business plan, or any other board-stated objectives that we've discussed with you.
Yeah, I'm looking... Yeah, I'm looking. Henry, Henry's sitting over there because Henry knows what I'm going to say. Henry is, has been sort of the, you know, one of the big forces in developing the business plan. And, you know, this doesn't, is not meant to offend Henry and Henry knows that, but one of the conversations that I had with the search committee and then ultimately with the board was that if you're hiring somebody to come in and implement the business plan, you're probably hiring the wrong person. I don't think any CEO wants somebody handing you and saying, here's what you're going to do for the next three or four years. You want to use that experience of that CEO to guide the organization. What I didn't have at NEARI that I have here is this business plan. You know, it has already given me an advance notice of some issues and some challenges and some opportunities out there that, that I can go and look at. You know, the, the four core areas of the business plan that we're focused on is sort of the top level are membership. You know, I have spent a lot of time looking at membership at NEARI and evolving our membership and I see there's a lot of potential out there to grow CMAA from an impact by bringing more members in. And, you know, that doesn't mean that happens tomorrow or that happens two days from now, but I, I think that's a, a goal from the business plan and I think it's a goal of mine and it's a matter of how we go through and develop that. The business plan talks about a strategy and, you know, I, I think that ultimately there has to be a conversation there with all the parties involved and start throwing some jello at the wall, and you'll hear my little terms here, but throwing some jello at the wall and seeing what sticks because we need to co-create that. Because our membership is both chapters and national, you know, that's not something that I can sit down and say, this is what we're going to do. Professional development, you know, is the core of what CMAA does and, and one of the huge reasons we exist. Yet I look at it and I continue to see opportunities here and I've talked to Jason a little bit and I've got Jason all chomping at the bit like I am to, to go down the path and, on some of these areas or explore them. So that's another area. Club solutions is another area that was put at as a, 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 a top level from the business plan. And it's an area that, you know, I told you, I've, coming from the insurance side, I understand that. 401K, I understand that. There's a lot of pieces of club solution that I understand. You know, I also understand that there is a balancing act when you go down this road with a for-profit entity to make sure it is done in a way that keeps your core at the association, that, that it is additive, not subtractive. And I'm not saying it's one or the other, but it's an area that I think has potentially lots of potential, but I need to understand a lot more of your relationships and with, with your members and, and what you look at. Let me use an example with club solutions is when I was at professional insurance agents, one of the things, we spent a lot of time training our insurance agents, and these are independent insurance agents, these are your members, is it's not, it's not about selling a commodity. It's about selling a solution and creating a relationship. My guess is in your club, your insurance agent is probably a pretty, pretty important relationship that you have. And so, you know, when another entity, whether it's CMAA that you have a lot of, of, a lot of affinity for, you know, that's, that's a special relationship. So we need to make sure it's done in a way that, that appreciates that. So I haven't yet, again, I haven't even walked in the door yet, so I haven't spent any time, but it's an area that I, I need to get my arms around. Networking is another reason why we exist as an association. I think that there are lots of other opportunities for networking that we have yet to explore at CMAA and I think they may be issue-based. You know, right now, we deal with things from a geography-based and other things, whether you're a, a golf club or a yacht club or whatever, but I think there's, there's other ways to do networking where we can share and use that community to, to leverage for the better of all of us. Because quite frankly, just like an association, you as clubs are the same way. You want to steal from each other. You want those ideas out there so that you can use and evaluate those ideas that are the best and the brightest and implement those in your clubs. That's what we're here for as an association, whether it's at the national level or the chapter level. We're here to be that conduit to get those ideas and conversations out. So I think there's, there's lots of opportunity. So that gives you a little bit of a, of a thought process, not having walked in the door...
Thank you.
Where I'm headed.
Jeff, for the vast majority of people in this room, Jim Singeling has been the CEO, leader of CMAA, and that's all most of us in this room know. So what can this group, what can we expect will be different with you as CEO?
Well, I've never worked with Jim. Jim and I really don't know each other, you know, despite having been in the association community both for some 25, 30 years. We've been in the same room with each other at times, but Jim is not somebody that I've spent a lot of time with. I can tell you about my skills and I mean, I am, you know, somebody who seeks engagement. I look to, to, to get as much input as possible. I look to be as transparent as possible. I need that member engagement because I'm an association professional, not a club professional coming into that association role. You're the ones that know your profession best, so I need to be able to sponge off of all of you and where Jim came in with that. So, you know, my, my skillset is a different skillset. I understand how to run an association. I understand how to do the best professional development and the best conferences and the best communities, networking and best advocacy and best gathering information. So my guess is our styles are going to be very different. But that doesn't make one good or bad. It's just different.
Jeff, obviously with your background, you're very familiar with the chapter structure and one thing you identified very quickly and accurately is that all members of CMAA hold dual and simultaneous memberships with their, both their chapter and national. Would you mind sharing with us just some of your initial thoughts on chapters in general, our structure? Anything you might want to add?
Sure. Well, this, this'll, out of my four organizations, this will be the third organization that I've dealt with chapters. And I can tell you that every organization with chapters and national, it is a sensitive relationship because, you know, we're both running organizations. We have a, a membership that we share and, you know, in essence, we're, to some degree, at times, we're doing the same thing, whether it be professional development, whether it be creating community. And so, you know, the key to success is creating an environment where we understand that we have this dynamic, but the greater purpose that we're here is for CMAA, is for our members and that we need to, to look at that and look at our piece of the pie as well as look at how this serves the members. And ultimately, the driving responsibility that we have is how does it serve the members? And what's best for the members? And then the implementation of that flows from there. So I want to create a very good relationship with my chapter managing directors and chapter officers. I want to be out there with you as much as you will have me. You won't find me inviting myself to your chapter, but if you invite me, I'm going to probably come. But I also understand and I want all of us to understand, and we're going to have to talk about this some because I don't know the dynamic. I just know that every association that has chapters, there is a dynamic, but it's something we're going to have to talk about and work through, but let's put it all on the table and figure out where we're going. And part of that responsibility from my standpoint is to be as transparent as possible about what's happening at the mothership at national. And I can make a commitment that I will do that and understand right now, all of the things I'm saying are words. You need to have me show you and I will show you over the coming months and years and decades.
For my colleagues in the room, this weekend, we unite our cap partners and many of them, as I look around, are seated in the back or seated at the tables and we appreciate what they do for our industry. Jeff, can you give us some thoughts on working with business partners?
Sure. One of the most important things we have as an association is that we wear a white hat. We are here in the sense that we are here for the members. We're not here to sell you something. We're here for the members. So by wearing that white hat, I feel very strongly that cap partners, as you call them here and in my prior organization, you know, I was dealing with the, the New York Stock Exchange and NASDAQ and all sorts of other people, there's a huge value that they bring into an organization, a membership organization. But by wearing a white hat, we need to make sure that those relationships do not pollute our purpose as an association. They have, you know, as cap partners, you have a clear goal of your involvement in the association is to forward your, your product or service. I understand that. But that doesn't mean that, you know, at a conference like this, I'm going to have you stand up and sell your products. It wouldn't be appropriate. So as an organization, we very much want to have a relationship. That relationship is important. Those partners bring a huge amount of knowledge into and can expose our membership to things that, that we don't see ourselves. Again, it's that diversity issue, but we just need to make sure it's done, and I think it is done in the way here to make sure that it is not polluted. It doesn't pollute our purpose.
Thank you. You had mentioned earlier in your commentary, you made a comment about CMAA's interests abroad and around the world. Would you care to share any initial thoughts on CMAA's impact globally?
Sure. You know, I come from an environment that everybody was looking to the U.S. for what's the best practice and what's the standard. And, you know, I think it's a very similar environment here. Our certification programs are, are, are top in the world and no offense to my, my friends outside the, the U.S., but I think we would all agree that they are top. And so I think, you know, we are no longer a society of one country versus another country. We are a global society and the internet and everything that continues to evolve makes that community much, much smaller. So I think there's an opportunity there for us to leverage our knowledge to help expand and professionalize the, the club management professional, profession everywhere. And, you know, again, that's done in a very delicate way and done with relationships with the various societies that are already out there globally. So, you know, it, it's something that, you know, I think CMA has already gone down that path and I'll continue down that path and it's something that I think is important and I think it gives us more and more credibility as an organization. And it, I need to just understand it better and I've already started down that process of understanding it better.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Got one more question and we'll open up to the floor and Jeff...
Make it a good one.
I'm trying. You scripted it perfectly this morning. Give me your thoughts on balancing CMAA's needs, the foundation and solutions.
Well, this is an interesting question because, you know, coming into the organization, you have these, these three planets out there that, you know, you all have your separate boards, which is all good. Some of the, the entities are controlled entities, others are not. And so, but the relationship is very tight. We're all in the same building and, you know, they are all part of what we do as an organization. You know, what is interesting is that you've hired me as the association CEO. You know, we'll see where the club solution board goes. They meet, you know, shortly and the, the foundation meets shortly. And I think that, you know, there may be an expectation that everything will fall right into place, but when you have separate entities, that may not necessarily be the case. So from my standpoint, my core right now is CMAA. Club solutions is a controlled entity of CMAA, so that that I will focus on. The foundation is something with our cap partners, we have a very integrated relationship with and, you know, I'm getting, in fact, I'm going out to dinner tonight with some of the cap partners. And so this is, you know, I'm, I'm anxious for us organizationally to get through this so that I can get my arms around it all.
Thank you. So at this time, we thought it would be fun and interesting to take questions from the floor. I'll tell you a quick, anecdotally, Jeff thought it would be a good idea or we might need to pass out index cards because, you know, he thought people might be embarrassed to ask questions. I assured him that's not the case.
I didn't... So... It wasn't embarrassment. What I, what I want is a dialogue and if you have questions, put them out there. You know, I'm working for you. Let's have a dialogue of whatever's on your mind. We've tried to hit some of the issues, but in my style, I don't like to make speeches and explain everything. I'd rather have a conversation with you. And so let's put it out there.
All right. One other point to make, please, there's only three channels on the mic, so when you have a question, I need you to use your biggest outside voice so everybody can hear you across the room. So who's going to go first?
You mean, we answered all those questions?
Get out the index cards.
Rick?
Mr. Bayless. Gentlemen, good afternoon. Jeff Walker, on behalf of all of us. Whenever there's a transition, there are opportunities and challenges. Things are working well, things that can be improved. Inherent in that is maybe a clearer vision and direction, but that ride isn't always smooth. There's a lot of puddles, sometimes significant hurdles, and what you can see clearly at the end of that trip, at times you struggle to get there because of a number of reasons. Tell me, are you a shrinking violet and can we, the first challenge that comes around, are we going to see wilderness at all on you, on your behalf or in the effort of staff?
See, I told you.
And you were on the search committee, so, you know, can't wait to see what other... No, I'm not a shrinking violet and, you know, quite frankly, having spent nine years working for Wall Street where they eat their young, it is, you know, the association was there out of necessity, but these people, well, all they wanted to do was bury each other. So you became very hardened because the association was in the middle of that and I'm not afraid of a challenge, you know, but, and I'm glad you sort of put this question out there, understand that my leadership style is to accept that we make mistakes. You are not going to evolve as an organization if you don't try things and some of those things do not work. And it is something that is core to my belief, core to how I operate an organization. You know, I told staff that when we go to annual conference, you know, there's a certain percentage of that, that I want to try new things every year. Some of those things, you guys and ladies are going to hate. Other things, you'll say, hey, this is the greatest thing since sliced bread. But, you know, we need to continue to try things and evolve and understand that if you do that in an environment that is controlled, so you don't make a big mistake, but you make small mistakes and learn from that, that's part of that co-creative environment. And so I can guarantee you, and that was one of the statements that I had as being hired, is I'm not perfect. I don't wear a Superman cape. I come in here as human. I have a great skillset, but, you know, there's a certain amount that the only way you're going to succeed is by making mistakes. And I think all of you, when you look back in your careers, you know, you'll, you pretty much acknowledge that, you know, you've taken some chances here and there, but those chances have been in an environment that has allowed you to succeed and that's what I want for CMAA. Good question though, thanks. Please.
Chris Barrett from the Build Up Hitch after. Welcome.
Thank you.
A question I got for you this year. We speak about global, we speak about national levels that we have. You know, club management association is just one part of the bigger part of clubs. You know, we have the PGA, we have the golf course superintendents, we have the National Club Association. So how do you see going forward, how will I or how we will try to grow locally with them under your tenure?
Yeah, in my opinion, this is, and I'm glad you brought that up because this is part of that co-creative environment. I mean, we are not, you know, we want to create a co-creative environment here, but that co-creative environment extends out beyond us and includes the PGA and includes National Club Association. I've already met with Sue and Brad there and had lunch with them because they're local and I could do that. Folks from the, the Golf Course Superintendents Association. Rhett reached out to me. I was in... I was in Nashville and met with some of his staff while I was there. You know, I have a conference call in a few days, you know, with other folks. So, I need to understand all these players, but I think together we can be much more successful. I, you know, use this example, and Tony can jump in here, but we have this issue with water right now, that, Tony, why don't you put, in five seconds, explain it?
Okay. Five seconds, sorry. I've been involved in CMAA's advocacy for the last five years or so since we formed We Are Golf, and the Environmental Protection Agency recently came out with a rule change that redefines what's called WOTUS, W-O-T-U-S, Waters of the United States. As kindly as I can say this, this is the, being considered by many experts as one of the greatest overreaches in the federal government's history in terms of, in terms of the EPA, and if you know the federal government, that's really saying something. So, there is a coalition that's very active and engaged, that is working very hard to provide industry comment back to the EPA on the impact into our industry. I'm involved in it. I'm working with Melissa and with the GCSAA and several other organizations. And we are really excited, because a bill actually was generated out of the House. It's HR 5078, and we encourage you to get behind that bill. It's really important. So, that's my sidebar commercial for HR 5078.
But this is why we work together. It's a very broad issue, and our voice to magnify it, you know, we need to belong to these coalitions. Our voice to deal with golf, and, you know, we need to be part of all this and work together. So, you know, and whether it's tennis, or I live in Annapolis, boating and other things. So, there's all sorts of coalitions there that are just part of what we do as association. So, very, very critical. Thank you for bringing it up.
Joe?
Welcome, Jeff.
Thank you.
I'm Joe Garvis, Managing Director of Build Up, it's chapter. And you mentioned that in three of the last, so, three of the last four associations, you had chapter, chapters as part of your organization. I realize you haven't been around long enough yet to see and to understand much of what goes on in our chapters, but I'd be interested to hear your thoughts on what you think a good relationship is between a national association and the chapters of that association, both up and down, support down, support up, and just what your thoughts of, so what a good plan, business plan would look like between the national association and the chapter?
Sure. Let me try to answer that. It's a good question. I can tell you lots of bad examples, but I think a good example is that national, as part of their strategic planning process, needs to have that chapter voice and chapter officer voice in there, as well as the full membership voice. That strategic plan ultimately needs to be the footprint for the organization. And then, from that, we parse out what is national's responsibility and what is the chapter's responsibility, understanding that in any chapter-national relationship, different chapters have different financial abilities, different numbers of members, different resources to be able to do things. And so, that's where some of these challenges come from, as far as figuring out how to carry forward that mission in a cooperative level. And so, you know, I think from a starting standpoint, good governance or a good relationship with the chapters is good communication. It is transparency, up and down. This is not just a responsibility of the national organization. It is a dual responsibility, both ways. There need, that all needs to be built on trust. And, you know, I don't know where CMAA is. I've not yet been exposed to it, but I think all of that is built around a partnership and understanding that we're here for the members. And, you know, what we do is, again, those members sitting on our shoulders, whether it's at a chapter level or a national level, and we make the right decisions. So, you know, I think clear communications, clear common vision, transparency, all of that starts to build that good relationship between chapter and national. So, I'm not sure if I answered completely, but it starts to tell you where, you know, what I see as some of the responsibilities as both partners.
Dick Copeland had a question.
Thank you. Jeff, first of all, welcome, and thank you for your comments this morning. They are refreshing and reassuring, so thank you. And I have a question that may be personal, so if you don't care to answer this, I have to say. My question is why? Why would you, at this point in your career, take on the challenges in CMAA and what attracts you in this position?
If I said I'm not going to answer that, wouldn't that be? Quite frankly, as I mentioned, I'm in my mid-50s. If I'm going to ever make another jump, now's the time to make it. And, you know, some of the things that I looked for, you know, when I opened that door to consider other opportunities, is learning from all the things that I've done in my other associations of what I want and what I don't want. One of the things I wanted was passion. I want, and, well, let me start with trade and professional. I don't want to be in a trade association. I love advocacy, you know, and there's a advocacy here, and there was advocacy in my last professional association, but trade associations are built around advocacy. That's not what I want. I want professional, which is built around community and professional development. That's what gets me jazzed. But I wanted members that were passionate about their organization, and you would be surprised at how many organizations are out there where the members and the association are looked at as a, as a customer or a client. And, you know, that's not what I want to be in. I want you to, you know, be excited about your organization. I want you to have an opinion about your organization. I want that diversity. And the search committee and the board did a great job of convincing me that all of you bleed CMAA blue blood. So, that passion is there. Number two, I want an opportunity. I am, I love to build things and love to evolve things and love change, and if I'm going to walk into an organization that I want to be with for the next 15 years, I want to make sure I'm not sitting on my hands with my feet up at my desk, because that's not, and you'll learn pretty quickly, and I'm a pretty high-energy person. I don't like to sit still. And when I look around here, there's all sorts of potential. There's potential in membership development. There's potential in what we do in all our core areas, whether it be professional development or whatever. You know, I wanted a, you know, as a change agent, I wanted an environment that is undergoing change. I came into that in the Wall Street side. I came into that in my last job with corporate communications, with suddenly we had all sorts of social media and other things. You know, you are going through, we talked about it this morning, I know, I mean, all you got to do is pick up the newspaper and read. The club environment is going through your own evolution. But when I look at it, I don't look at the glass as half-empty. I look at it as half-full. And when I look down the road, and, you know, I can pull my iPad out behind me here and be my own futurist and tell you the trends that I see based upon sort of the association world, and the trends are people have a lot more leisure time, people have a lot more desire for engagement, you know, we're not becoming a less social environment, we're becoming a more social environment, and we could be a great cocktail discussion. But, you know, the things that I look at, I think there's lots of potential here. That doesn't mean that we don't have some ups and downs and some evolution to go through. So, I want to be part of that. I want to be that moderator to have that discussion and for all of us to figure out that solution. And that solution may not be in this room, it may be with our partners, but together, you know, I think, I think club management is, and clubs are core to our society and are going to continue to be core. So, I want to be part of that. So, those types of things, and I think I got 15 years to, you know, we got 15 years of evolving that I can be part of. So, all of that, you know, were, were great things that attracted me. And then, there were some softer things that attracted me. CMAA is across the street from where I am now, which certainly made it a lot easier when I started thinking about change, that, you know, I didn't have to change my commute. Well, I have to change it because I got to park in a different parking garage. But, you know, I can still go to the same gym. I can still have my daily routine. So, all of that kind of thing, you know, I didn't have to move to New York. So, all of that, you know, were, came into my, you know, my sights. My wife, my wife and I have been married 30 years. We have two kids that are, so we're empty nesters. We're about to put our house on the market and downsize, like many of you that are empty nesters probably are doing the same thing. And so, we love the Washington area, but, you know, this all, and she's a nurse, she works in Baltimore. And so, you know, all of this, you know, came, you know, I felt like it was, to some degree, divine intervention, and that sounds a little bit trite, but everything lined up, all the stars lined up, and CMA is everything that I want, and I want to, I want to bleed CMAA blood too.
Awesome. Albert?
Albert Costacini, Jersey chapter. As many of us around the room, when we're taking the job on, and we're going through the interview process, one of the questions I know that I ask often is, what one, two, or three things does the club want to see me do when I come on board? You've been very open about what you want to do. What did the board or the search committee tell you that they wanted you to do as your first couple of years?
Well, I'm going to throw that to Tony and Damon, because they're up here, and I've been on the hot seat, so you guys, you know, you answer this. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, come on.
Well, let's see now. Albert, no, seriously, that's an excellent question. We've got some short-term challenges that obviously are going to occupy Jeff's attention for the foreseeable future, but, and those are just things that need to be dealt with that, that he obviously has the skill set to deal with. But we are, we are so excited about opportunity in the future with respect to, particularly in the area of membership growth. And we really feel that this alignment of Jeff's skill set and our need in the area of membership growth is really, is frankly spot-on. So, one of the areas that we've asked him to focus on initially was identifying and implementing strategies to assist us, to assist us in achieving what our membership growth goal is. It's, it is part of our business plan and our strategic plan. It's certainly listed as our top strategic priority, and we really feel that Jeff is bringing to the table a unique set of skills that are going to position us in a very favorable way to achieve them.
Good job.
That's good.
Yeah.
I don't know if you have anything else?
No. You know, from my, you know, I think another way to put it is build a solid foundation to serve the membership and then serve the membership. So, you know, I need to build it or make sure it's there, and then leverage that and be as transparent and be as engaging in doing that.
I'll piggybacking on, oh, Albert, you know, some of the questions were asked, or we asked about the culture of the association or club. What's your impression of the culture of the CMAA, the diversity of the CMAA, and how you see yourself learning, serving, managing, leading, and changing that culture?
That sounds like a loaded question. I would say that, you know, as I look around the room, you know, I think that from a culture standpoint, are we talking about club or CMAA?
CMAA.
Oh, well, I think that, you know, the culture here as an organization is camaraderie, is sharing, is built on professional development, you know, is leveraging off of each other and learning from each other, and, you know, wanting to see the profession continue to be elevated in the eyes of your members and elsewhere. And, you know, I see my role as picking that right up and continuing down that path. You know, I'm not sure whether that is answering your question, or if there's something specific you're trying to get me to talk about, and I'm happy to talk about it.
Well, the CMAA National Office, that's probably a cultural environment to it.
Sure.
How do you see yourself managing that change and possible transition coming in after a season of professionalism, because you've served that association for so long?
Yeah, okay. I understand better. Thank you. This is my second time of replacing an executive who's been there for 25 years. And, you know, my role is to appreciate the past, but continue to evolve the organization. I think the staff at CMAA, you know, is excited and scared about a new CEO coming in. You know, excited because a person has new energy, new vision, new, new skills, new thoughts, but scared because, you know, as I'm talking about, looking at the foundation, that is what they are, they are part of that foundation. And so, just as you go through this in your club, I'm going through this. And, you know, my, you know, what I've told staff is that I will be as transparent as possible as I'm doing my evaluation. You know, I don't know where we're going to come out on the other side of this. You know, I, I think that, you know, part of what I need to balance is, there's some things that I think CMA needs to do immediately. I don't have the money for that. So, I need to look, and one of the things that I'm going to do is understand the finances intimately, and we have these three entities, and I need to understand all that, and understand where's the money coming in, where's the money going out, how is that serving the membership, and is there a better way to do that? Part of that, better way to do that or build that solid foundation is affect staff. Part of it is changing our culture. Just as, you know, I said, I don't mind, I will make some mistakes, that extends down to staff, is that I want to, and the term that I used was intraprenorial, not entrepreneurial, but intraprenorial, to staff. I want them to all be entrepreneurs, but be in the organization. I want them to be, look for opportunities to grow, look for opportunities for CMAA to grow, look for opportunities for how we serve the membership the best. And so, you know, I think that may be a little bit of a cultural shift for them, because, you know, I think Jim was more of a, you know, here's how I see it, please implement this, and I'm much more collaborative. I want all of us in there cooking and making this together. I also want to celebrate all them. It's, you know, my, it's not about me, it's about, it's about you and it's about staff. And if staff, you know, creates something, I want everybody to know that and be the one slapping that person on the back. So, you know, I think that, just as I have said to you, that right now, all of this is words, and I need to show you, and we need to build that trust. My staff is, is what's going to make all that happen, and I need to build that relationship, and I've started down that path with them as a group, and then, starting with senior staff individually, I'm going to spend time with each of the staff people and everybody on staff and, you know, start digging into understanding how we're doing it and how we're delivering. And I think that cultural aspect for how I manage will start to percolate in all of them, and I'm hoping that, you know, they will all become entrepreneurs and all become afraid, or not afraid to try something for the betterment of the membership and understanding that failure is acceptable.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Cousin?
Thank you. Please allow me to make a couple of comments as a member and ask you a question. Number one, to the board and to the search committee, congratulations, and thank you for your job. Very well done. Number two, to Jeff, I am personally very glad of you today, of listening to you. I am energized, I'm super excited about the future- I'm super excited about the future of the organization, both nationally and on the chapter level, and I can't wait to see you in action.
Well, thank you.
My question is, in the next few weeks and months, as you start to develop and do things, look at the organization and look at our future, what can we as members do to help?
I need to hear you. You know, one of the biggest problems we have within any membership organization is you appoint a board and expect those, what is our board, 14 at the national level? You expect all those people to come with the answer, and that's not how the world works anymore. The world works in this co-creation where we all have a voice. You all expect to have that voice. You expect to have that voice, whether it's in your club, whether it's in the product you buy. And so right now, I don't have those mechanisms to collect your voice. I will over time, but I want to hear what your opinion is. That may be, you know, you have, your opinion may not be how things go, but I want to hear what that is, which is why I want to get out to the chapters, which is why I want to have conversations with as many of you as possible, which is why I welcome those emails. You know, it's the way I'm going to absorb everything that's around, and that's the biggest way that you can help me. Thank you. I'm so glad you're such a talkative and all these great questions. Thank you all very much. This is great.
Dr. Eric Wilson, chapter. We talked today about being a global and a national organization, and a lot of our regions have different challenges, our chapters have different challenges. I just wondered if you had any thoughts on regional representation, not just on the board, but actually management team, satellite offices, and people, so that's good.
Yeah, that sounds like a loaded question, too. What I'm going to do is rephrase that to say that chapters are critical. Management of chapters can be done in lots of different ways, and there's not a one-size-fits-all solution for this is the way you have to do it or this is the way you should do it. So I think that what I can bring to the table is understanding the chapter dynamic and hopefully being a resource from all my experience in the association world to help bring you how best it might make sense to manage at a chapter level. You know, in organizations that I've been in, you know, we've had management companies, we've had, you know, folks solely dedicated to managing that. I've been in a regional side. You know, I think that my responsibility at a national organization is to help share with you what tools are out there and equip you as board members at a chapter level to be able to make the right decision for your organization. That doesn't mean I should be telling you that this is the way to do it.
Dana?
Dana, now, welcome.
Thank you.
My question is global as well. The time that I've been a part of CMAA, I've been very delighted to see the global growth of club management associations throughout the world. And I'm just curious how you, as the CFO, approach the international stage as something in progress?
My approach first is to understand it because I don't have any understanding. We met with some of our European peers today, and that helped to start to give me some understanding. I need to understand the dynamic of the societies out there, what they're doing from a professional development standpoint. What can we do to help create a common best practice, you know, or from a theme standpoint, for club management, and then understand what our role is. You know, I think that, you know, as the United States, you know, the one thing I am very cautious about is the arrogant American. I do not want to be the arrogant American that goes out and tells everybody, this is what you should do. And, you know, it needs to be done in a cooperative environment, and I think that, you know, we're probably the 800-pound gorilla. I don't know that, but that's probably what we are. And we need to understand that and appreciate that and not be dictating, but helping and because how does it serve the membership? And I think there is ultimately there by us going out and helping that global community, it ultimately serves all of us as club management professionals. And so that's what we need to understand first before we put a strategy into place.
Anybody else?
Everybody's ready for.
Joe?
I apologize if this is a loaded question, but if you're sure time, I get a opportunity to explore and if so, in a way to address potential conflicts between chapter vendor partnerships and national member partnerships.
That is a loaded question. Thank you. And it, you know, the one thing that I would have loved to have given up going from one organization to another is that, that rub, but I, you know, I had hoped you would have had the magic bullet to have it fixed here, but, you know, you've just answered the question, and I knew the answer, that, you know, there is that, that challenge. You know, I think that, you know, and you're starting to hear me be repetitive, you know, it's how does this serve the membership, and then what is the best way to serve the membership? And quite frankly, is more money best for the association membership? Is bigger best for the association membership? Is more money, you know, going to a chapter for, from a corporate sponsor versus the national better serve the membership, or does more money to the national better serve the membership? I don't know the answers, but I think that the overriding decision-making should be how does it serve the member in the best way possible, and then implement a path forward in a collaborative, in a collaborative way that we all agree, that this is, this works. And I'm not sure if you think I'm smoking something that we can get there. I don't know. But, you know, let's start with, I haven't even started, so let me have my dream.
All right. Are there any final questions?
Jeff, one question.
Please.
If you wanted to talk about student education and your thoughts for relationships with university programs.
Great question. You know, I've, I've come from a profession that, you know, financial communicators, that doesn't, investor relations professionals, that doesn't have really large degree programs, and those relationships have all been, you know, we've been trying to cobble that together. What I come here is a very rich relationship with universities. And quite frankly, you know, it is key for a professional association to have those relationships, and I'm looking forward to continuing down that path of having those rich relationships because, you know, we want to, those students are professionals of the tomorrow, and we want to make sure that CMAA has a role there and CMAA is part of that because it not only brings them in to the organization, it makes them better professionals over time. So, you know, it is vitally important. I don't know the, yet, you know, how the dynamic is at CMAA as far as all the relationships with the universities, but I know it's important, and I'm right there with it.
Any final questions? Yes. Jay?
We all experienced watching what happened in the PGA, with the PGA and the membership in the late 90s and looking into the 2000s where it really led to a saturation problem with golf courses not closing and a lot of members who are qualified. When you look at, and we all agree that membership growth is one of the most important targets for the association, how do you balance that qualitative growth versus quantitative growth for our membership so that we don't lose anything to our partner?
I haven't started yet. You know, give me a little bit of time to absorb things, and then let's, let's have that conversation. If you are thinking that, and I've told the board this, if somewhere along the line I have a Superman cape, that I have all the answers, you know, you're all sadly mistaken. I'm here as a facilitator. I'm here as your CEO. I'm here to create conversation. I'm here for us to come up with those solutions together. And that us means us in the room, us outside the room. And so I would be ignorant to respond to that in a way that would, it would just embarrass me. So.
I think the question's really more of a comment. I think it's a comment represented by a lot of members that look to our future and say, how do we find that delicate balance going down the next decades if there is no substantial growth of opportunity as far as new builds? And, you know, really, what the PGA did, and I have a living example of it, is trying to create multiple jobs within one facility. And in our environment, we don't want to create our own competition necessarily, but just sheer quantity.
Yeah, great statement.
All right. Any final? Jeff, go ahead.
Sorry, last easy one. When you're not leading an association, in addition to being an expert soccer referee, what occupies your time?
I've lost my license. I don't, I don't ref anymore. I run, you know, I'll, I'll run six, eight, 10 miles a day. You know, I'm a believer that, you know, one of the things we should do as, from a personal standpoint, is have some meditation time. That's my meditation time, is to go out there in the morning and, and run. You know, I'm not a golfer. I golfed up into my 20s and stopped when I had kids and picked up being a soccer referee and other things. I'd love to go back. My son is chomping at the bit for me to, he's like, oh, you have this job, now you have to go play golf. So, you know, he's, you know, that's an area that, you know, as being an empty nester now, I have the time, and I'd like to go back to that. I live in Annapolis. I have a house or a condo at two hours at the beach from Annapolis. It's about a two-hour easy jump. We spend a lot of time, that's my escape place, so we spend a lot of time there. My wife and I do, we love to travel. She is a nurse, as I mentioned. Her schedule is such that, you know, sometimes she can travel with me, sometimes she can't, so, you know, we take advantage of that. You know, I love to mow my lawn, you know, and I love to be out there. You know, so often, we sit behind a desk, and, you know, I like to be outdoors, whether that's, you know, riding a bicycle or gardening or mowing my lawn or, you know, chasing my deer, the deer away from the back of my yard that want to eat everything that grows. So, you know, I don't have grandchildren yet, but hopefully my kids will get married, and that'll come, too. Thanks.
All right. Any final? Yes.
I'd like to know, Mr. Morgan, if you could be around for a couple minutes, so those of us who you create chapter newsletters can get a picture of you with our chapter office system, you know, and you should, you got that one?
I'm, I'm not sure. I have kidded here that I feel like I'm being hazed because I gave my, these four days, I said, I'm here, tell me where you want me to be, and everybody has kept me on a treadmill moving, and I feel like it's part of the initiation process that if I'm still standing on Monday, that I'm going to continue on. So I think we need a board picture, but I'm not, you know, I'm around the next four days, so, and I think I'm buying beer in the next, at the reception, so.
Give me a applause.
So if I can, I'm happy to.
All right. Any final comments? All right, a couple of announcements, but Jeff?
Can I just say thank you to everybody? I appreciate the dialogue. I appreciate the conversation. This is what I love to do, is have the conversation, not get up there and make a speech, because I think this is much more valuable to you all, so I hope that you don't have meeting butt, and if you do, you know, thanks for bearing with me.
Well, congratulations and welcome.